Good afternoon, good afternoon. Thanks for coming today. I was afraid that the room wasn't going to fill up and it did, so that's terrific on a beautiful Wednesday afternoon. My name is Bob Delves. Nine months ago, you all elected me, or at least some of you, or maybe enough of you, elected me to city council. And I'm now the mayor pro tem of Carmel by the Sea. And as I will always say, I truly appreciate your trust. And I'm quite pleased to be of service and to help lead your government. Let's do a little housekeeping first. This meeting was noticed as a city council meeting. It's not going to be a city council meeting. We noticed it so that my colleagues could attend if they wanted to and we wouldn't be in violation of the Brown Act, which is our sunshine law in Colorado. There are, I think it's just, the mayor is here and me, so we haven't, maybe it wasn't necessary, but we'll see. And the second thing is there's handouts that essentially are just the highlights, the topics that we're going to be talking today, just so that if you want to, you can make notes, because we are going to talk at you for about an hour. And we're not going to break for questions. In between, we want to get everything out and then we'll collect, we're going to open it up for as long as we want today. Great, so let's get going. If you'd have told me a year ago, when I was running for city council, that I would be standing in front of you to lead a topic on addresses, I would have said absolutely not. When I was, when I was running for office, I very much ran on just the basic concepts of good governance, helping our government be more responsive to you all, our citizens, fiscal discipline, accountability, transparency, good management. I'm a business person, I'm a lifelong businessman, that's the perspective I bring to city council. And when I was running for office, when the topic of addresses came up, I changed the subject. And honestly, it's just, I knew it was really important to a lot of people, it was not really important to me. But things changed, you know, how did I get from there to here? Three things happened. First off, in March, I believe of this year, we had a city council meeting. We had four hours devoted to the topic of, you know, street addresses in Carmel by the Sea. And one of the great flaws of our electoral system is that when you're running for office, you have to talk a lot. And when you're serving in city council, you have to listen a lot. And so in a four-hour meeting, I listened a lot, I learned a lot. I learned a lot about the work that had been done by a previous ad hoc committee, it was actually led by Karen, and learned a lot from just listening to the audience. There's a lot of passion around the topic, for sure. And, you know, when you, when there's that much passion in the room, you gotta listen. So that alone caught my attention. Secondly, in February, so before March, in February, some of my colleagues in our city council meeting actually wanted to do a deeper dive on the topic of response times, so our first responder response times, our emergency response times. So some of you may or may not know, but our, our fire department is actually, we don't have a Carmel fire department, Monterey Fire Department is our fire department. We own the equipment, we own the building, but they run the fire department and they staff it for us, and therefore that's done contractually. Part of the contract is that they need to report on response times and that they're contractually committed to being, responding within five minutes 90% of the time or better. So that's the thing we get, and they don't always meet it, but they often meet it. But the probing that was done by my colleagues was, it was the first time that I heard our fire chief and our police chief say clearly that our existing system, what I'll call traditional system of house numbers, of identifying our homes, does cost us in response times. We're going to talk more about that, a lot more about that this morning, or this afternoon. But again, that caught my attention. When we're talking about public safety, response times, as your elected official, I have to pay attention to that. The third thing that happened was that these people here approached me. Specifically Nancy Toomey was the first to approach me, and she'd been doing that even back before the election on this topic. And she's been very consistent in her opinion that the topic of addresses needed to get more daylight, needed to get more community discussion, and it needed to be addressed in a setting like this, and not necessarily in city hall, because, or in a city council meeting. City council meetings are often not the best venue for dealing with a more, you know, difficult subject. But she was also clear, and I agreed with her, that we needed more information. You know, going back to that March meeting, at least one of my colleagues, after those four hours, was actually ready to move forward with implementation, and at least one of my colleagues was ready to absolutely not move forward with implementation. And, you know, what I realized at the time was that I was, I was in neither camp. I was just lacking enough information to make an informed decision. You know, we, a lot of things were asked and answered, but I just felt there were a lot more questions that needed to be asked and answered, specifically around the implementation. If we were to move forward with a more standardized address scheme in our city, what does that mean? I was in the software business, and I can tell you that when you, it's really easy, it was really easy for my clients to turn on new software. What was really hard was for them to turn off the old software. Now, there's systems in place, and change is hard, because, it's not hard because you have to embrace what's new, it's hard because you have to let go of what exists. And if you think about it, our traditional address scheme that's in place today has been around for 100 years. And all of the people that provide services to us at our homes, so PG&E, KLM Water, Comcast, AT&amp;T, Greenwaste, UPS, it's many, many, many of them, they've actually all concocted some workaround to make it, to make it work in their system, and no two of them have the same workaround, right? So I know that all of those entities have to undo their workaround if we move to something standardized, and that takes a lot of work and a lot of effort, and I just felt like we had to understand what's involved in that. Beyond that, I just had a basic question of what's an address? If, if you're asking me to vote on something, well, what is it? So that's really what launched this, and I'm going back to Nancy, she, she shared that opinion, and I was grateful for that. The next thing that happened is Kevin Roos approached me and really just said, hey, I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and help you or help anybody ask and answer more of those questions. And what was really interesting is that the two of them kind of come at, from different perspectives on the topic. Nancy is sort of a proud protector of tradition in Carmel by the Sea, and so has, she has a very open mind, and she wanted to be better educated, but I would say perhaps her starting point was, if we could stick with tradition, let's stick there. And Kevin, Kevin wants an address, and he, he will just tell you that. So the fact that I had kind of both sides of this, someone that was hesitant, someone that was impatient, eager, and my own need for more information, I thought, okay, I've got the core of a group that might do some work here. In that March meeting, I asked my colleagues on city council if we could form this group, we called it the Address Group Tag, really clever. And Emily from our staff group was already kind of quarterbacking the issue, and then Paula joined us, you know, after about five or six weeks on the topic. So let me... Oh, I've done the numbers. Page down the numbers? No. Need to, I'm trying to page down. There it is. So I'm going to introduce these folks, just because they're, they're too humble to kind of give themselves service. So Nancy, many of you already know Nancy as an extraordinary community servant and volunteer. She represents the Carmel Residents Association often. Nancy attends virtually every meeting that is held by the city. She's just a constant force, and perhaps has a better working knowledge of our city than most of your elects. Just a remarkable public servant in that regard. She also spent a career in technology jobs, and she really has excellent data management skills, which actually proved very important as we did this. Kevin Roos has a deep and lengthy background as a researcher and a consultant in academia, in government, and in the private sector. He too has great data management skills, and he's really a phenomenal problem solver. Do you have an engineering degree? You should. Paula has the vac, so Paula was born here, Paula spent 18 years on the city council, and her, she is a fourth generation. Are you the fourth generation Carmelite? So there's probably a fifth generation. No, not yet, not, there's still time, Paul. And a lot of people wanted to join this group, and I was actually pretty hesitant about adding too many people to it, because then we'd lose control, but I just thought the sense of history, you know, but Paula, Paula and her family have witnessed over a century of change in this town, and over a century of protecting the traditions of this town. And I just thought that perspective was invaluable. And then Emily is our city staff person, and Emily is probably now the world's most knowledgeable single individual on the topic of addresses, because she spent a lot of time on it. And for me, you know, I, again, I would much rather that you all knew me as sort of the humble, somewhat invisible voice of common sense and fiscal responsibility, because that's kind of who I am. Really, the, the last thing I wanted to be was the public face of addresses. So I think... Oh, there it is. So proof that no good deed goes unpunished, here I am in last week's Monterey Weekly as the public face of addresses. So there we go. Thank you, thank you. But you know what, sometimes other people's words are interesting, so I'm going to read you a little bit of this. You know, "Mail call: Carmel residents to hear an option for street addresses should they agree to accept them. The 21st century has been knocking on Carmel's door demanding the city finally adopt street addresses, despite some residents in town determined to preserve village character. On August 5th, it knocked again in a detailed report by council member Bob Delves, the public face of addresses in Carmel by the Sea," that wasn't there, "who serves on an ad hoc committee studying the issue. The committee reaffirmed the current system doesn't conform with state law, and then went further developing a possible new system that would pass muster with the United States Postal Service. While some residents continued to object to adopting addresses, a growing number began speaking out with worries about first responders not being able to find them and sharing stories of trouble applying for real IDs or insurance coverage, receiving package deliveries, and using rideshare services." Delve said the committee met with police and fire representatives who shared that they have, that not having standard addresses does, does cost the city in response time, up to three minutes, although he said response times are still excellent. We're going to talk a lot about that. They also met with representatives of the utility companies, KLM Water, PG&E, AT&amp;T, Comcast, unquoted, "I can tell you they showed up with their A-teams, all of them." PG&E, and this is a quote again, "PG&E is delivering flammable and volatile products to our homes, and it bothers them that they can't always find us." You know, "I smell gas." Well, where are you? I'll be out front. So... So the first thing we did as a group, we got together, we decided we, we needed a mission, because this is one of those things, it could just go and go forever. We, we were pretty, pretty committed that this cannot take more than six months. As happens in this town, sometimes things, efforts like this just go on and on and on, and we just agreed we weren't going to let that happen. So by having a clear mission statement, a North Star, it really helped us, it kept us really quite disciplined. So we are here, we exist, to enable the city council to make a well-informed decision on whether or not to implement standardized addresses in Carmel by the Sea by developing a comprehensive understanding of the tasks, effort, and responsibilities of doing so and the impacts of not doing so. To be clear, this group is on a fact-finding mission, we're acting as scouts. We, we delved enough into, you know, the implementation of street addresses without implementing street addresses, because we have no authority to do that. But you, you, we did the work necessary to understand what would happen if, if the city council decides to move ahead. We're not empowered to make decisions, that rests with the city council. So today, we're going to share our findings with you, then we want to listen to you, and we're particularly interested in having you react to what we're telling you. I'm, I'm sure we will hear from some of you that have passionate views on having an address or not having an address, and we welcome those, but a lot of those are probably more appropriate for your city council. We're really just trying to educate, and I'm sure we've missed some stuff, and that's really what we're trying to find out, is what, what have we missed, what could we have done better? Give us that feedback. And, so this was our timeline, this should have basically six months on it. So the city council approved us in March, we got started on April 2nd, so we're five months, almost exactly five months, 150 days into this thing, we've been meeting every week, sometimes twice a week, this week, three times a week. We started out by, actually, and this was Emily's idea, we went and talked to Salinas and Marina. Why? Because they continue to bring new subdivisions on, and that's sort of what we're doing. We're not a new subdivision, but from, you know, from an address perspective, if we're trying to implement a standardized address, and I'll define that more in a bit, we're sort of like a new subdivision. So we learned from them about, you know, when, when a new subdivision is approved or when they get, you know, to the certificate, certificate of occupancy point, what is it that they do to make addresses real? And a lot, the answer is, it's a lot of working with the post office in the county. So we, those were great learnings. We had a great meeting with Todd, Trey, our acting police chief, we didn't change that yet today, acting police chief, and the fire chief, we'll give you more on that in a minute. We had some additional conversations with the post office in addition to the ones that we'd already had. We developed a prototype, and I'm going to take the tangent here and talk about the prototype, because it's important. So again, I'm, I grew up in the software business, and prototypes are just kind of second nature for us in the technology business, that it's, it's, it's very difficult to talk about a concept, and it's not just technology, it's really in general. But if you kind of make it real and allow people to see it, touch it, feel it, you get a much better conversation. So again, early on, we, we just concluded that we needed a prototype. Hans Buder, a younger city councilor, would call this an MVP, a Minimum Viable Product. My dad would call it a straw man, but, you know, those are all the terms. And, you know, so we developed a prototype, and really Kevin did the lion's share of this work of, you know, first trying to figure out what would satisfy the post office for their address management system, and I'll talk more about that in a second. And then he came up with three or four different schemes, systems, and kind of did the pros and cons on them, and picked one and developed it to the extent that he actually was assigning numbers to homes and buildings on specific streets, and also trying to figure out all the anomalies, you know, on that map over there. But I'll remind you, it's a prototype. We didn't exceed our authority and design an address system, even though we'll be, we'll be able to talk about this prototype almost like we did, but we stayed within the box we set out for ourselves. This was Paula's idea, we went back and looked at all the emails that we've received to really just remind ourselves of what people have been saying for the last two or three years on this topic. We met with the utilities, I'll, I'll talk more about this, I was afraid of these meetings, because I wasn't sure how cooperative they were going to be, and we need them to be cooperative. Punchline, they were awesome, they did show up with their A-teams. We met with Monterey County, Monterey County is a big player in, in this whole process. And now we're having this community workshop, pretty much doing it right when we hoped we would, at the end of August and early September, we've got another one next week at 5:00 PM on the 4th, I believe. And then we'll be going to city council for their October meeting, which is October, first, first, first Tuesday in October. And unless city council wants us to ask more questions, we're done. You know, we've, we will have accomplished the mission and hopefully come back to city council so that they could make a well-informed decision. So these are, these are the topics we'll go through today. The good news, we've already done number one, we're going to talk about the post office, we're going to talk about state code and legal requirements, we're going to talk about safety, public safety, so dispatch and response. Kevin's going to get into a fair bit of detail on the prototype, we will discuss our service and utility provider findings, what we learned about with the county, the summary of feedback that you've already given us to date, and then we're going to open it up to you all. So before I hand it off to Emily, I want to share that one of the biggest learnings that I'm going to share with you, and I hope I can do an adequate job of articulating it, it's funny, Kevin figured this out like two months ago, I think I finally figured it out yesterday, that the post office, the United States Postal Service, let's not use the word post office, that's a place, the United States Postal Service does two important things relevant to this conversation, and they're related, but they're unique, they're different. The first one is the United States Postal Service delivers the United States Postal Service mail. They've been doing that since before we were a country, since July 26th, 1775, Benjamin Franklin was the first postal, postmaster, and, and they've been delivering the mail, right, ever since. And it's changed some, and sometimes not that much. In Carmel by the Sea, we do not have home delivery of mail, right? Our mail is delivered to our post office, to that building, and then the people in that post office put the mail in our P.O. boxes. That's how we get the mail. What's interesting is there are thousands of towns and small cities in the United States that that's exactly how they get their mail. We're not unique. I lived in Telluride, Colorado, that's how we got our mail. Almost every small town in, that I know of in western Colorado, that's how we get... But, you're leading the witness. So, so that, you know, that's what, that, and what's important about this conversation is nobody is trying to change that. Your city council doesn't want to change that, the post office doesn't want to change that, they don't want to incur the cost of delivering mail to your homes, it's just not even interesting to them. So take that. The second thing that the United States Postal Service does is they own and manage the address management system, AMS. AMS is the center of gravity for house numbers, for address, you know, we, I, I'm trying not to use the word address, because it can be construed so many ways. We're talking about identification numbers for our buildings, physical addresses, what the utilities might call premise IDs, but, you know, it's, it's that. And so, and, and the world of addresses, all of the entities out there today that need to validate and understand your address, they all go to AMS. So PG&E, to validate an address, goes to AMS, Uber goes to AMS, UPS and FedEx, you know, and their systems, that all these systems are fed from AMS. It is the single national safe source for building identification. Our traditional scheme, you know, my, my, my house number is Camino Real 3SE4. That does not, it is not compatible with the address management system. It, it's against the rules of the address management system. And you folks are right, that in all of those other thousands of communities, you know, across the country, that get their mail in P.O. boxes and go to the, go to the post office every day to see their friends or to ignore them, they all actually have standardized addresses, they have AMS-compatible addresses, and therefore they are visible to, because of AMS, they are visible to all the entities that, that use AMS to essentially populate, you know, AMS stands for Address Management System. We'll learn, we'll learn more, but that, yes, that people that create, you know, for example, Google Maps, Kevin and I met with a Google person who basically said, yep, Google Maps gets populated from AMS. And, you know, that it happens when they want it to, and they go and get it, but, you know, that's kind of this, again, it's the center of gravity. I think that's the main point I wanted to make here. That is, Emily, you want to?
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Emily Gray, I'm the admin analyst for the administration department. Some of you may recognize me, over the last three years, I've stood up here and tried to explain that the city foremost sees that mail delivery and street addresses is two completely separate topics. The implementation of, of an address system in itself will not compel the post office to close, and it will not compel at-home mail delivery. But I do want to take it back just a little bit to November 2023, and that was the second time that the city council met in recent history to, to discuss street addresses. And in, in that presentation, staff identified a clear goal of communication and critical elements for the community that would need to be answered. And again, some of those critical elements were, what happens if street addresses are implemented, what happens to the post office, will the post office close? Will there be at-home mail delivery? Will there be mailboxes at the end of the driveways? You know, and then it's, it's been a long road, but certainly working together and now forming with, with this team and with this group that enabled the city to really enhance that goal and get closer to achieving that goal of clear communication with the community and working together and collaborating. So with that, now we can move forward. So as, as staff has always, you know, wanted to communicate again with clarity and transparency, staff cannot definitively say that the post office will not close. That's just something that's out of our control, but again, it won't be compelled because of a street address implementation in, in and of itself. So to just go a little bit more into the basics of USPS, is that P.O. box will be, P.O. box delivery will continue as it has been. Again, this is called a centralized delivery system, it's preferred by USPS, it's the most cost-effective for them, and we already have it set up. So, yeah, again, they have, you know, it's in their best interest, and we've spoken with the postmaster, we've spoken with an AMS manager, again, and that's regional, district level, and we have a streamlined, efficient system in place for them. And as, as Mr. Delves, Mayor Pro Tem Delves mentioned, USPS is the primary authority for standard street addressing. So all, a lot of other databases, I don't want to be, I don't want to say all, pull from USPS, from AMS, so they're the standard for physical... So they're the standard for physical, physical address identification, which is now the standard for for banking institutions, for Secretary of Interior, when they go in to type in your address, when you give them a call, that's the database that they're pulling from, that's the database the DMV pulls from. So if you, if they can't work out a way for you to pop up in there, that's what's causing all these problems and the reason we're all up here, working to try to to streamline the process for the community a little bit more. So again, so if a standard street address system is implemented, this will not result in at-home mail delivery or at-business delivery. It will not result in those mailboxes around town, a mailbox at the end of your driveway, that will not happen, or what are known as gang boxes or cluster boxes. That will not, this will not compel that. And again, the post office, the city, since 2022, has understood and held closely in every conversation we've had, any new contract we've made, it's one of the first things we say, this is our post office, there's no plan, there's there's no desire for it to close, and if anything, that's something that we're, that's our line. That was always our line. So and again, the current system will continue to your P.O. boxes. So a little bit about USPS address requirements, and I think some of you've heard me talk about this before. So they have what are called USPS addressing conventions and guidelines. They spell out exactly what type of address, what format of an address will clear in their system. And if it doesn't meet all these criterias, just imagine a bunch of little checkboxes, and you get to a next, it's just not going to clear. So once you meet all of these requirements, I'll just briefly go over them. There's a lot more. These are just, you know, the main ones. Must begin with a whole primary number. Must include only one street name, so, you know, Santa Fe and Fifth. Will not clear that box. Even numbers on one side, odd numbers on the opposing side of the street or avenue consistently. Supplemental unit suite apartment number at the primary standard address, and a suffix that must be numeric or alpha, so either apartment one, suite B, things like that. And an example of an accepted USPS address would be, just an example, 656 Ocean Avenue, Carmel by the Sea, California, 93921. And as part of our homework throughout throughout this, these past 150 days, working with the group and also briefly with with Mayor Byrne, we did contact USPS, again, Address Management Systems manager, and ran a few variations of currently used addresses around town. You can see they can be slight variations, there are these in this orange box. So, you know, we tried to San Antonio Southeast 13th or to San Antonio Southeast of 13th. We all know we make little changes, or sometimes PG&E has a slash in between those two. So we did try different variations and asked USPS to please run those through their system just for confirmation, and none of these cleared. And there are more, these are just some examples. So we get to the to the legal requirements. I think that's something that, you know, we've, as a group and council and and city staff have talked about, including our city attorney, Brian Pyrick, are the legal requirements. So this is what's been, you know, now commonly known as the fire code, the building code, and the residential code. We usually, you know, just sort of rely on the fire code, but all all three of these codes are actually in play, and all three of these codes require address identification. That should be legible. Placement with the background, visible from the street or road fronting the property. Numbers shall not be spelled out. Each character must be four inches high with a minimum stroke of half inch. And as required by fire code officials, address must be provided in approved locations for emergency response, which again is something that this group in the city has really focused on, which is public safety and and emergency response. One of the the fourth requirement would be where access is by a private road or driveway, and the building cannot be viewed from the public way. Monument, pole, or sign shall be used to identify the structure. We do have some streets like that in the city, sort of have that driveway that goes in, sort of emergency responder, if they come in, so it doesn't just look like a long driveway for for one property, there would be postings of that address, those address numbers there. And address identification shall be maintained. And then I'll hand this back over to Mayor Protim.
Thank you. Just so, just to reiterate, kind of what Emily just said was, we did, one of the first things we did was try and make our traditional address system acceptable to the to A.M.S. And we tried it all the different ways, right? So again, I'm on Camino Real 3SE4. So we tried that, and we tried all the tricks that we all do. I tried putting, okay, let's put the three first, three Camino, four SE. Let's try putting a zero first, because sometimes that one works, right? And it's bottom line, they just don't work. And then on the legal requirements, I mean, really what, and this one really caught my attention, is that our current address scheme is not in compliance with state code. And and I'll I'll take this, we weren't gonna, but I'll do it, because there's a lot of talk about doing an election on this topic. And what I learned was, if you have an election that would enable you to, you know, to continue to be in non-compliance with state code, that's not a legal election. So you just can't, you know, it's kind of one of these things, you just can't do it. And we could have proceeded with like a a non-binding election, and, you know, maybe my colleagues will still want to do that. I don't know. Personally, I'm, I think our our format of, you know, elected representatives puts the burden on the people you elected to make those decisions. But we'll see what what my colleagues want to do. All right, let's talk about safety and dispatch. So in my, in my introduction, I gave a little teaser on what we'd already learned. Let me get into a little more detail. Let me start by saying that our response times are absolutely excellent. That's a result of our, of the excellence of our first responders, of the leadership of our first responders, and the fact that all of us live within a mile or less of our assets, right? That the fire department and the police department are never, ever more than a mile away, and we're lucky, right? And now, for over a decade, the Monterey Fire Department has been under contract with the city of Carmel to run and staff our fire department. So stated more clearly, Monterey Fire is our fire department. We've been quite pleased with that arrangement. And and I'll just kind of get off topic a little bit, but just to share that I think it's going to even get better. Two things are happening. One is Monterey Fire Department across, because they provide service to us, to the city of Monterey, Pacific Grove, the airport, and maybe Delray Oaks, I think. So they they've actually created economies of scale to make themselves a much better service. They are now on a mission to make sure that every fire truck has a firefighter paramedic. So anytime a fire truck shows up, there'll be a paramedic on that truck. They're not there yet, but that's that's a commitment they've made. We didn't, we didn't ask for that. That's just what they're they're doing. Second thing is, you may not be aware, but Carmel by the Sea runs our own ambulance service. We are the only city in the county that has retained our own ambulance. And that was just good thinking by previous city councils to make sure we kept that. Everywhere else in the county, the ambulance is provided by A.M.S. A.M.S. is a private sector player, and they work under contract with the county. AMR. A.M.S. is the address management system. You got me. What is it, AMR? It doesn't matter. Yes, so, but we've run that ourselves, really through the police department. And as Todd would tell you, the police departments don't really know how to run ambulances. We've we've done a remarkably good job of it. But we are probably in October going to sign a contract with Monterey Fire to have them take over our ambulance. So I think what is already excellent can get better. So now let's talk about what we learned. Response times. Response times are a function of first dispatch, so that's at the front end of, you know, the whole 911 process. Dispatch is on the front end, and on the back end, response times are a factor of, first off, you know, proximity, where are the assets relative to where you are, and also then with the familiarity of the town by the people in the trucks. So let's start with dispatch. So Carmel by the Sea, and we actually do this because of our address system, we run our own dispatch unit. So the Carmel Police Department has a dispatch. I confirmed this with Todd this morning. That is unique in the county. So every other 911 call, so any any 911 call that's not made in Carmel by the Sea goes to the county centralized dispatch, and they handle all dispatch, police, fire, and ambulance. But because of our address scheme, our traditional addresses, they don't speak Carmel address. So we train our own people to speak Carmel address. So if you are in 911, and if, sorry, if you're in Carmel by the Sea and you dial 911, whether on your cell phone, and whether that cell phone is on a cellular network, or on Wi-Fi, or a landline, it, most of the time, will go to our central dispatch at the Carmel Police Station. I only say almost always, if they're busy, it may go to the county. But let's say 99 times out of 100, it it comes to our dispatch. What they then do is figure out where you are, because they understand Camino Real 3SE4. And then they, after they figure that out, we call that triage and translation, and then they call the county dispatch. Then the county dispatch, having had the benefit of triage and translation, they call the assets and actually dispatch them. Okay? That can take anywhere from 30 seconds to three minutes. Those are not included in the response times that are reported to us by Carmel Fire, because the response times, as reported to them, you know, they can't start it until they know. And so when they're in the truck and rolling, that's when they press go and start measuring the response time. So that's three, 30 seconds to three minutes on the front end. Okay, let's get to the back end. This is where proximity and familiarity come in, that if that call goes to, is dispatched to the fire truck that is sitting on Sixth, on Sixth Street, well, those people in that firehouse, whether they're in the ambulance or in the fire department, they've actually committed to two-year terms in the city. So they're there not every day, but they're there a lot, and they're very familiar with how to find us in Carmel by the Sea. So that's the good news. As long as it goes to them, and as long as they're there, they know, they know how to find us. But it's really quite common for our ambulance and/or our fire trucks to not be here, because there aren't any to the south. So our guys go to Big Sur. They certainly go to the Highlands quite a bit. So it's it's common that, you know, when we need something, that our assets aren't at home, and therefore they have to come from somewhere else. And somewhere else is if it's the ambulance, it's AMR. And if it's if it's fire, who knows, but it's probably somewhere else within the Monterey Fire System, typically the closest one. You know, and they're aware typically of that that our assets aren't around, so they're maybe more alert for it. But nonetheless, they're coming from further away, but important to this conversation, they're not as well-trained in our address system. So that adds time on the other end, because when they show up, they'll press, I'm here, and that stops the response time clock, but they'll tell you, and even our policemen will tell you this, who are extremely well-trained, that that doesn't mean they've really found us. It just means they think they found us. But if it's the middle of the night, they have to go out and they have to count houses. And then they have to figure out, does somebody have a light on? And so it adds time. And this is the one that really got, I think, all of our attention to really understand it. Oh, the last comment, I think this is important. We we have now gotten our fire leadership and our police leadership on record is actually saying that they would like us to have standardized addresses. They've been very reluctant to say that, because they they think it's not, let's try not to do a politics, because there's a lot of opinions on this. And, you know, they they want to stay out of politics, and they've always viewed this as a political conversation. And we're just trying to turn it into a public safety conversation, and and that's that. Okay, we are ready for the Kevin, the Kevin prototype show. And again, it's a prototype, not the real thing, but it could be. But so we agreed to some rules. So again, at this point, we had already tested our traditional system and concluded that the the A.M.S. was not having it. So we gave ourselves some rules of what we would want to include in an A.M.S.-compatible system. We didn't want to trigger changing street names or introducing more street signage. Whatever we come up with has to satisfy A.M.S. That's kind of the linchpin of this whole conversation. It should be preferred by our first responders. It should use the city layout as a plus. It should be logical and intuitive, and it should protect traditions where possible. I don't think I need to say the rest of that. Kevin, you want to roll?
I'll let you know. Let me, hello. Is that too loud? Okay. Okay, better? Move that a little bit. Okay, so we looked at a variety of options. I'm kind of going to skip through the remainder of this slide because I hit it in much greater detail later. So let's let's continue here. Hard to hear you, is that better? Okay, that's better. Whoops, I ended up at. Don't want to go all the way to the end, do we? Okay. We looked at different alternatives that we could use for an address prototype, prototyping as scheme, which is what the post office calls it, a numbering scheme. And why did we create a prototype? Well, it was partly to understand the process, but it was also really necessary to engage with the stakeholders, like the post office, A.M.S. people, and the the county. These are entities that will have to approve what we come up with. And it also makes it easier to talk to the utilities and the first responders and all that. So that's why we made prototypes. And we made four models. One is quadrants, another one where numbering is continuous within the city, another where it's continuous within the county, and the fourth, which is what we came to call the logical positional model. I'm going to talk about each of those in greater detail. So quadrants, can I have someone at the map for a second? Actually, let me, let me grab the mic. Okay. You're on it? Can you hear me? Okay. So quadrants really takes advantage of the fact that if you look at a map of the city, you have Ocean Avenue, and you have Hunipro. These are logically, the city is divided into four quadrants, northwest, northeast, and so on. And what we wanted to do was, if you look at this model, and this would be, all of these are A.M.S.-compliant. Whoops, okay. Hold that up. Is that better? It's nice to have some, nice to have someone talk. Can you also over there see? Well, this is, I think, you'll get the idea, and mostly this I'm going to talk to you from the from the slides, anyway. There are some problems with this. So this requires northeast-southwest designations. So for example, if you live down here on Camino Real, you know what? You won't be living on Camino Real anymore. You'll be living on South Camino Real. If you live up here on Second, you won't be on Second anymore. You'll be on East Second. And one of our rules was, we don't want to change street names. That's a lot of sign painting, a lot of sign replacing. Another problem is that numbers can be duplicated in different quadrants. You could have a 150 East Sixth and a 150 West Sixth. One more way to get confused, I used to live in Washington, D.C., which was in quadrants, and believe me, I've gone to the wrong quadrant. And, you know, you're late for your meeting at that point. Another problem is that, well, that's, those are the main problems. Those are the reasons not to go with quadrants. Those are the reasons not to go with quadrants. So we'd like to talk about continuous within the city. Basically, it says we're going to start at one up here. Obviously, this is where First Avenue is. And you just keep numbering. You can't go one, two, three, because you have odds on one side, even on the other. And the post office also will not let you do one, three, five, seven, because you have to have at least one extra number available between any two numbers. This is for infill, you know, development, whatever might happen. So if you do that, you number them one, five, nine, et cetera, all the way down. You get up into, I think, close to 600 by the time you get down here. You're not honoring these numbers. So you would expect a number between fourth and fifth to start with a four, because that's logical. That's not going to, that would not happen in this system. That system does keep all the numbers at three digits or less, which is not going to be true of some of the other approaches. So let's talk about continuous within the county. If you start outside the county and drive into the city from the north, you'll look at the numbers on these houses up here. They're 24,800, 24,900, they're in that area, more or less. We would just continue those numbers. Cause if you're on the south side of the city down here, these numbers are on the 26,000 somethings. And there's enough room to put all these numbers in here. To me, one problem with that is that, you know, it's like the sign outside the door here says, painted on the wall in the mural, you know, Carmel is special. I kind of like the idea that when you cross the city boundary, things change. I think short numbers are more quaint than five-digit numbers. What part of the effort of trying to find a way to protect, protect the notion that Carmel is different from its immediate surroundings? The villages as opposed to, you know, general Carmel. So anyway, that, that would be the continuous model. So I'm going to talk more in detail about what we call the logical positional model. And what this does is it honors the traditional approach that you know where a house is within a block. So right now, if you live at, you know, like, like Bob says, you know, for Comino Real, south of Fourth, you know where that is. If you live in Carmel, you know where that is, right? You know that it's at the north end of that block. You know where Comino Real is, you know where Fourth is. You can visualize the location of this house just by hearing that number, if you live in Carmel. So if you look at it this way, if we use the numbers, you'll still know. If someone lives at 250 Torres, well, you know that's on Torres and you know it's between second and third, because it's 250. And because it, the second, because it's a 50, it's probably in the middle of the block. So you actually know where it is pretty well. East, west, you need a logical dividing line, which is also Hunipro. And the numbers will get bigger this way. I'll talk about this in more detail in just a second. So we're preserved, it preserves some notion of the ability to find out, to know from an address where the house is within the city on the whole map. It also keeps it numbers to four digits or less. You break into, you break into four digits once you get south of 10th. Cause those, you know, that would be where 1,000 would begin as opposed to 100, which would start up at first. Thank you, Brandon. Okay, so now for what I sort of think of as the money slide, from the prototype perspective. I do want to point out, this is the same map that we used when we talked with the people at the post office AMS system. This is the map we used when we talked with them. We also, the same map we used when we talked with the county. And they are both okay with this. They gave us a, you know, tentative thumbs up. So if we look at this, can you see the, am I moving the mouse on here? Yeah, you can, okay. This is the one we developed into prototype. Now, the first question you have to ask when I started researching address systems is, where is the origin? In a quadrant system, the origin is where the two, two main streets intersect. And so we thought, well, okay, what are the, what's the logical place for the origin to be? At the north, it's obviously zero is going to be in the north because the numbers get bigger as you go from north to south. And we thought, well, we have this great, really logical physical boundary here, the Pacific Ocean. Let's use that as zero on the west. So if you look up here, if there were a zero, zero, and to be clear, the post office does not allow zero as an address. You can't use leading zeros either. So it would be up here somewhere, out in the ocean or up in Pebble Beach somewhere. And so then what we do is we move. So that's the origin. Everything's numbered from that point. Now, I'm going to talk about north to south first. We have this little area of the city up here from Alta down to First. And so those are numbered one through 99. For the rest of these blocks, you have 100 numbers per block, but you have to have 100 numbers for two blocks here because that's where the city starts and it's north of First. The good news is there are enough numbers. So from, from First all the way down to 13th and beyond, numbers will correspond to the numbered avenues. And the first digit or your number will be the avenue to the north. That's true all the way through the city. Ocean Avenue presented a question, which turned out to not be a problem because it runs from Sixth to Seventh. Ocean's in the middle, it doesn't have a number. But there's enough room here for all of the numbers. So they're just simply numbered between Sixth and Seventh. All these would be sixes, six, six series numbers. Again, oh, you're going back to the big arrows here. Even numbers are on the west and on the north. Nothing sacred about that. That's just the way it's almost always done. So that's convention, if you will. So let's talk a little bit about west to east. I always stumble on this because in American English, we always say east to west. I think that's because the country grew from the east to the west. Anyway, I've had to reframe my brain to talk about west to east. These are west to east avenues. So we have, the decision was made to use Hunipro as 500. Cause you're going to run into, you run, in this corner of the city, you run up to roughly 900, high 800s. So if you use Mission as 500 and you're going back, long blocks are 100, 100 numbers per block. That's from north to south. Short blocks are literally half the distance of long blocks. Our standard city block is 400 by 200 feet. And so these, these blocks are only 50 numbers per block. And if you count back from Hunipro, that means that 100 is here on Carmelo, I want to say. It's Carmelo, I'll talk about that in a second. And you just number from west to east, continuing up. There's enough room between the beach and Carmelo for all those numbers. Cause there are very few houses numbered on that, on this axis. In fact, it's true throughout the city. Easily 80% of lots, it's probably closer to 90% of the lots will be numbered on north, south streets. I can't give an exact number because corners will throw things off. And we'll talk about corners in a minute. Let's see, let me go down to this slide. So as I mentioned, we use numbered avenues for the north, south, long blocks. Short blocks are half the length of that. You have to have at least one number available between any numbers you assign. And the good news is on our north to south blocks, we'll have 10, 10 numbers between house numbers. And then the other axis, you have 50 numbers for the entire block. There are very few blocks in the city and there are only a couple in the business district that have six lots per side. So you have 50 numbers to divide between, not 50, because you're, it's one side of the street. You have six numbers to distribute across 25 numbers and it still fits. You still meet the requirement. But in most of the city, there are only one or two, sometimes zero lots numbered on that side of a block. Generally, there's one standard address per APN. You get your tax bill that has your APN on it, your parcel number. And APN is kind of a standard unit. When I talk about an APN, I might, sometimes I call it a lot, sometimes I call it a parcel, but we're basically talking about the same thing. So exceptions, and I've talked with. Oh, then it, then it retains the local custom for intuitively knowing where, where, where a house is. So there are exceptions. And I've talked with, you know, a lot of people have known that I've been very curious about numbers and addresses here. And people say, what about, what about this? What about that? What about corners? What about diagonal streets? What about, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And so the point is, yes, there are lots of exceptions. The good news is there aren't very many kinds of exceptions. So you have diagonal streets. Let me go back to this one for a second. You have a di, can you see that okay? Oh, it's, it's really not very bright there. Anyway, going by the Forest Theater, Mountain View. And you have the, these two streets down here, Biscayne, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right, Crespi. There's a tiny diagonal up in the corner, easily resolved using the short block versus long block rule. We have non-continuous streets. For example, Fifth and Sixth, if you're going west and at Monte Verde, they just don't continue. Torres ends at 11th. There are a couple of other examples. There are streets that stop and then pick up again, like First. Yes, it's an excellent question. I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit. So for lots facing more than one street, because it's not just corners. We have lots that run all the way through between two parallel streets. There are some lots that have three sides. Cause they're what I, what I call an end cap lots, like the end of, end of an island, a grocery store. Yeah, and the rule is from first responder safety, because they want to find you, is that the front of the house is the side you're numbered on. And what's interesting about that, if you've ever done a, any work that required a permit in town and you've learned about setbacks on your house. The setbacks, I live on a corner and my setback is sent to Santa Fe. That is not the front of my house. The front of my house is on First. Okay, so even though for planning department purposes, the front of the lot is on Santa Fe, the number will be on First. So yeah, well, yeah, I'd rather keep questions for the end. If, so and generally there's one address per APN. There will be some exceptions to this. An obvious example is the police station and Public Works and the Carmel Youth Center are all on the same APN. They're all in one lot. There are obviously three different buildings with three different functions. They're each going to need their own address. Public Works might need two addresses, maybe one for the delivery entrance on Torres. You know, and we can, there'll be time for conversations about these things. Assessor's parcel number, that's on your tax bill. Yeah. And if you're in the part of Carmel that's getting numbered, you're, it probably starts with 010 or 009. And as mentioned before, retain the local custom for knowing where a house is. Exceptions, okay. So let's talk about a specific example of residential prototype. And I want to really stress, these numbers are approximate. If you see your lot here and you thinking that's my number, yeah, it might be, okay? But nobody is telling you that this will be your number, okay? So don't get, don't get attached to it if you see it. So I want to talk about, again, pointing out odds and evens. So you see on this side of the street, the west side, as I go down Carmelo here, these all end with even numbers across the street, they end with odds. Same is true going west to east, even numbers on the north, odds on the south. Also lot size affects numbering. So if you look at this right here, you know, this could be 705, not 715, but it's a really big lot. So we're going to give it a number that's more or less corresponds to the middle of the lot and it's the position of the middle of the lot in the block. And if you look at a standard, if you think of a standard block as being 10 lots long and two, two lots wide, there are very few of those in the city. Almost every block has multiple lots that are different sizes. Also, I want to point out that the, the third digit, you'll notice, for example, if we come down Carmelo, these are all fours on one side and all fives on the other side. And we've been asked questions like, well, why don't we just start with, you know, the 100? You know, four, why aren't these all just 700 in every block? And the reason is the post office doesn't want it that way. They want maximum discrimination. So what we do is we, we backed up starting, you know, if Carmelo was, excuse me, Hunipro is 500. So we back off one digit each block. So by the time you get down here, these are fours and there are fives here. On Comino Real, there's, there's sixes and sevens. Those, that's the last digit in this block. So we have maximum discrimination across the city. Here's an example at the bottom, the orange lot. Whoops, not sure what happened there. The orange lot is actually the Playa Hotel, which is a huge lot. It's two-thirds of the block, maybe more. So it's going to be numbered something like in the eight 30s because that's more or less where the middle of that lot is. Okay, we need to talk also a little bit about ADUs and cottages. I'm going to let Nancy talk about that.
Stay close by. It's just a real quick update here. Page down. All right, ADUs. So as some of you know, I'm working on the housing element and I've got an ADU hat on for that effort. So I thought I would chime in on this one. And we're clearly, a lot of ADUs have already happened throughout our city. The number is somewhere in the seventies that have already been deployed throughout our community. And we're thinking about where, where and how do ADUs apply to addresses? And this is a recommendation only. It could morph based upon feedback and continued digging into the planning departments, you know, how they want to work some of these things. But our objective with ADUs are to get them ideally, I mean, the property owners need to do what property owners need to do. So you have full rights and privileges in how you choose if you are doing an ADU or you have an ADU. You can choose to rent it. We would like to see as many of the ADUs that are built and, and/or exist in the community be rented out to additional folks in our community. That is a goal. It is still the property owner's privilege to do as they see fit. But with an address, if an ADU is issued an address and our recommendation is that they are issued an address, as Kevin had mentioned, there is space in between the numbers that, that he is proposing in the prototype. And this would allow an ADU to have an address because there's space in that numbering scheme. And so an ADU with our recommendation is eligible for a USPS address so that it has autonomy. That person who lives in, or people who live in that ADU can have their own mailbox. They can, PO box, I should say. And increasing levels of autonomy. They don't have to rely on their primary residence in that part of their life. So we'd like to encourage ADUs to have an address, but it is not a requirement as it stands right now unless you're going up to the, to the front desk to do some changes and/or to create one in the first place with our proposal. Again, this is, this is fuzzy but directional. So at day one, because we don't know of all of the locations where cottages or ADUs exist, because some of them may have happened in a prior decade or two. We're not saying that ADUs require an address, at least again, proposal. But we would recommend and propose with the discussions that we've had preliminary is that if you want your ADU to have an address, once we go live, you can simply go up to the planning desk and request that that get an individual address. So that's the recommendation. And if you've got more questions on that as we move into Q and A, we can deal with that. But just wanted to kind of throw that out as a directional reference for moving forward. Okay, back to Kevin.
Hey Nancy. Okay, let's look at the commercial slash business district. Raise the mic again, okay. Better? Yeah, okay. Again, I want to point out these numbers are approximate. If you see the location of your business on here, might be your number, might not. Look at my notes here. So let's look at, for example, a west to east example. There's my mouse here. So this is Ocean Avenue. So here we would have, say, 350, 360, 370, 380, 390. This lot here is an L lot. It's actually not numbered on this side. It's a, that's a passageway that goes through to Flaherty's, which is on, which is clearly on Sixth. These numbers on, on the, on the west, east axis, these do not need to be tens. I did that in this block just as an example, but. So for example, here you could have 410, 422, 434. You know, they'll all be even, but they don't have to be tens. And depending how many fronts there are. fronts there are on a, in a block, they may be much closer together, much farther apart. So if you, if you look at this, again, a reminder that from sixth to seventh numbering continues, they're all in the sixes as you go, as you go down. So if you think about the city, if you look at the library, nice photo of it on the wall right here, the Harrison Memorial Library, which is at Ocean and Lincoln, would be, a good number would be 300. That's where it is, 300 Ocean. It could also be as high as 324 Ocean, according to this plan, depending how you, you know, what you choose to do. City Hall would probably be about 650 to 670. But it'll be an odd number, because it's on that side of the street. Let's talk about units. These would be buildings with more than one suite in them, a building that has more than one store, a building that has more than one residence in it, apartments and condos. These are traditionally nationwide numbered internally. The basic rule with the post office is that a structure gets one address, a building gets one address. So they'd be numbered internally. So take Carmel Plaza as an example, you've all been there, and they have internal numbers. And they have a nice map that says this is where everything is, and these are numbered 100s, 200s, 300s, or whatever. So every building in town that has more than one unit in it is going to have to do this. Most of them already have. All the condos in town certainly have different unit numbers and so on. Some businesses probably don't. They will have to do that. Our thinking is that that is dependent on the owners. But we will need to know what they are. Because those will be addresses. All right, I'm pretty much done. Again, welcome questions at the end. I'll turn it over back to Bob.
Okay, we're getting close to the end. Thank you for your patience. So utilities. I mentioned before that I was in the software business, so when I was a much younger man at the, kind of, the end of the last century, I was the chief executive of a software company. And we provided software to utility companies. And specifically, we've provided billing software to utility companies. So when we went into our conversations with the utilities, although I was asking the questions, frankly, I already knew the answers, because they all run software that my team put in sometimes. So actually PG&E and Calam Water both run software that, if not exactly my software, was a descendant, it wasn't my software, but you know, descendant of that software. Actually, we sold the company to a, a big German software company called SAP, and most of these, a lot of these companies run SAP. The reason we wanted to have the conversations with the utilities, and I alluded this, to this in my opening comments, was as, if we implement standardized address, AMS compatible addresses, there's a change management cost. And we're trying to figure out how much of that cost is gonna be borne by us as individual homeowners versus by the companies that service us. And, you know, the question we were asking the utilities is, is there a way where you can own the change? Where you can take on the effort of doing essentially a batch, old-fashioned term, but, you know, an update of all at once, all of the customer records for your customers in Carmel by the Sea. Because if they do that, then we don't have to, right? And Nancy's gonna talk here in a, in a bit. There's still gonna be stuff that we all have to do. I'm not gonna say I have a promise from any of these utility companies, but as I said before, all of them showed up with the A-team. And I, I know what the A-team is, because again, I know their software. So it just wasn't some random customer service representative. They showed up with people who understand the systems, who understand the data, who understand how to, you know, do mass updates to their data. And all of them did. They all showed up with really exactly the right people. They all expressed interest in, in owning the problem and doing the work required to update their records. And as I said before, they all want to do this. Because they think they can provide better service if they know where we are. So I think that's kind of the, the main punchline. Nancy, did I get it? All right. All right, Emily.
So this is sort of an overview of a developing process that the city has put together. This process came to light after speaking with the city of Marina and the city of Salinas, sort of, how they approached the county, their process. Again, the county is a big player in this. And we wanted to get a better idea of their process to make sure, you know, we're not running in circles, chasing our tails, and then we get to the county, and then they, you know, they ask, what is this? So we spoke with folks, lead engineers. And again, in order to be able to develop this process, it's been like a collaborative experience with this team, with residents, with the planning department, Anna Jeanette has been great at getting us in contact with folks that are key players. Rob Culver over at Public Works has used his contacts of being here in the city for over 20 years. So he really knew the folks that we should contact. And again, we, we were able to put together a list and then contact folks to give us a better idea of how this process develops. So as you can see, again, this is a developing process, but we've, when we met with the county, they pretty much said, yeah, you've got it pretty right. Good job. So, you know, in step one, it's research and review. Again, we met with fire and police department, planning and building, Public Works, just to get their views on it, very importantly with fire and PD. You know, what helps you find people? What, what makes the difference for you in all your experience, the different cities you've worked in? And we put that into our process. And then USPS review, which, which might seem a little, you know, it's number two, and then it also pops up at number five. USPS review is a general overview, which is a numbering, directional numbering scheme review. So that was actually the map that you saw Kevin put up here. And it's just, where do you start? Which, which direction do your numbers go? Is it logical? Does it meet the criteria? You know, they don't go and look parcel by parcel. It's just generally, if you obey these rules, and this map continues just the way that you showed it, okay, thumbs up. So that was step two. And step three is, again, that, that's the full numbering scheme, like this. In number three is a massive undertaking at that point. Again, this team has come up with, with a prototype for that. So that could be fully developed. Another scheme could be fully developed. But again, that's at number three, and, and that's, that's really where a lot of work is, is gonna keep happening, and a lot of collaboration is gonna have to take place. At step four, that would be county approval. And that's when the entire numbering scheme is developed, and it follows all the rules. And, you know, they review and they could say, you know, we found some errors, fix them. And it could go back and forth. Or, you know, we're kind of great. It could, you know, a, a scheme could be approved on first try. So then, a number of things happen at the county level, and that includes sort of the assessor's office, elections office, their GIS and IT department, emergency communications. So that's all their different departments that make these changes for the people in the county. And then number, step five is a distribution list, sort of what other cities call it in, in the county as well. They call it mass distribution at that point. So that approved scheme gets sent back out and to particular contacts at all these utility companies, including USPS. So at that point, USPS accepts a version of step two that's fully developed and followed all those rules. And then at that point, they go and they put it in their AMS system. And it goes out into the world, and at that point, with all of these key players here, you're findable and you're verifiable. And, and you know, your address will have a fair physical verification at, at a standard level that everyone else has.
So magic can occur, you know, crossing fingers. Okay, so there's a lot of different entities that we all, as humans on the planet, deal with on a day-to-day basis, whether it's your financial institutions, your insurance companies, your legal interactions with trusts and titles, et cetera. So there are groups of, of folks that you deal with that, that you need to reach out to if they benefit from having your physical address in their files. We don't know who those relationships are. You're going to need to do that reach after we have the go-live that will be in our communication plans and, and was referenced in part in what Emily just covered. So there's those very personal, specific relationships. Again, we have no idea what those are. We don't want to know. But then there are other entities that, if and when you go to renew your driver's license, or get a new real ID, or, or license for your car, whatever. At those times, if the PO box method and record representation for you works just fine, and they don't need your physical address, you do not need to provide it to them. But you have the option, once we go live, of providing that information to them at that, at that juncture. So, so yes, there will be some tasks. We're, we're hoping through the efforts that, that were already described by Bob in the utility space, that that will all be done for us. I did want to just offer that in some of our discussions with the utility companies, they say, if there is any question that we don't have the correct location, if we're not absolutely sure that this physical address matches what we have, what, what they have originally, previously, on record, they will reach out to you and confirm that. But if it's a no-brainer, it's, you know, you're a corner property and you face San Carlos, whatever, it will be in absolute double, triple verification through the county work, through what we do, et cetera. So we're hoping that in the efforts and the collaboration that, and relationship and their willingness, that a majority of all of the utilities will be covered in the work that's done as a part of the, the cities updating those entities. But there could be touchpoints there. But our objective is to make it clean and seamless and take as much effort off the plate for those that go outside of this kind of a range, where there are personal relationships outside of, of, of that utility function that you may need to, again, do an outreach to them once it's go-live, because they're, they'll be able to press buttons on their keyboard or respond accordingly on the phone, et cetera, to be able to verify, yes, I'm on 123 El Camino, whatever that might be for your location. So that's just kind of an update on, there are some spots where you'll need to do some work as appropriate for your circumstance. There you go. Oh. And then, Paula.
We're in the home stretch. We're almost done. I know you guys are probably very anxious to ask questions. So here on slide 24, approximately 95 emails were received at City Hall for city council members between October 2023 and just until a couple of days ago. Because this has been a significant local issue, this group was determined to log each and every comment expressed and made sure to include the name of each individual associated with each email. Whether for or against, all the comments expressed were extremely important to our group and added great value to our research. And with many of us attending and participating in the city council topic in recent years, the live comments closely parallel those submitted via email. Let's see here. Upper right, page down. Okay. This roster summarizes and reflects your issues, concerns, and suggestions. Comments by those who favor standard addresses included but were not limited to the following. Emergency services errors, challenges, and delays. Many were concerned about the difficulty of describing a location while under stress during an emergency. Online transaction challenges. Prescription drug deliveries such as refrigerated, time-sensitive items are of a particular concern to many of you. Financial, legal, and insurance transaction problems. It is a, it is, it is common that a PO box is not accepted as proof of residency and its location. Therefore, a task as simple as requesting information or a quote online can become impossible, extremely frustrating. Utilities, as we know, most utilities have created their own unique address system for Carmel by the Sea. However, this has led to mistaken disconnections, misdirected billing statements, and other problems. California building and fire codes. A standard physical address is required by law. Those who wish to keep our non-standard address system expressed concern relative to, we don't want to lose our longstanding traditions and our unique character and charm. We must keep our downtown post office open and to continue and continue to pick up our mail. We presently have great public safety response times, which is true. We can manage no standard address glitches if they occur. Some residents weren't comfortable, were comfortable exploring alternatives to the USPS addresses considered. And many requested more details regarding procedures as to how and if any changes might be implemented before decisions are made. In closing, the wisdom, curiosity, and creative spirit of our residents never ceases to amaze and is true. Thank you to all of you who took the time, and honestly and truly, some of these emails were very long, detailed, and really very impressive. Again, these comments really helped our group focus on fact-based research. Thank you.
We're done. So the question is about signage, and we, we, we will watch you use the microphone, but I'm just gonna go ahead and answer the question about signage. So Kevin, did you bring your signs? It was, we took it out.
Yeah, he got rid of it.
Right now, you probably have a sign that looks something like this. Yeah, you probably have a sign that looks something like this now. If you have a sign. This is actually, sorry, yeah. Longer, yeah, well, yeah, I live on a corner. My sign, southwest first and Santa Fe, is really long. This, these are actually four-inch letters, and the stroke is half an inch wide. This is how big the numbers are supposed to be, according to the code. This is what it's gonna look like. And it's about the same size. It'll be a lot shorter if you live on a corner. So the homeowner does that. It's whatever design, whatever design you want, you know, pick something that goes with your decor.
Yeah, and it does not need to include the street name, avenue name, any of that. It is just a number. Whatever your number is, is the requested posting out in front of your home.
Four inches tall, and the stroke is half an inch wide. It's interesting that, I couldn't find any place where it described how wide the number has to be, the number itself, but the stroke is supposed to be half an inch wide.
The width of the character.
Sorry? Well, you have to post a number. The code requires that. That's more of a question for an enforcement entity than it is for anybody up here.
So I think we need to get you all on microphones, we got Zoom. Right? Daniel's gonna do this. Did we answer your question? Yep. We'll get you the mic in a minute.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for all the work you've done. I'm really impressed. I really thought, I, I really seriously thought it was real simple, just, you know, to put a, a number on your house, but I appreciate all the nuances that came out. But I have to tell you, I'm 82 years old, so the question to you is, are you recommending something to the city council? Are you gonna go in there and say, this is what needs to be done? Hey, because it's, it's the state law, right? I don't really know why, much what we're debating about, since it is the state law. So remember, in the city of Redlands, going to a pretzel over whether they should allow women to have a soccer team in the high school? And someone said, hey, this Title IX, folks. Come on, guys, this is the law. You know, it is the law.
Want me to answer? So I'll answer. I am on the city council, so I have to be careful. This matter is not before the city council. It's gonna be on the, the agenda in October. We're presenting this presentation. We're presenting this presentation or a modified version of it to the city council to educate them. Our mission that we all agreed to from day one was to educate, to do research and education. It really was not to provide a recommendation. I think you could probably find a recommendation in here if you wanted it, but we're just trying to stand, we're trying to stay in our box and let the city council decide. And a lot of that, Hugo, is driven by my colleagues that were a little concerned that maybe this group was overstepping its authority and doing what they're supposed to do. I need to respect the opinions of my colleagues. So come in October. It's only five weeks away. All right, let's go. Daniel, you just picked, yeah. Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you. Great job. You know, it is all about the details. So we appreciate that. We really appreciate continuing the effort that was done by prior councils. So thank you. The question I have is what about those houses that currently have street numbers?
There are, so thank you. So there are homes in Carmel by the Sea that have addresses. By and large, they were annexed. By and large, they're actually in 93923 or 93922 ZIP code. They have street addresses. We're not touching those. Those will stay the same. Jim?
Yeah, first, my question's for, probably pointed to Nancy because this is an area that she presented. Okay, is this any better? So first of all, thank you for this. It's nicely done. I'd also thank Nancy for her effort quite a period of time ago for that fabulous tutorial that she put out that suggested that we really didn't need to go down this path, but that's just my opinion on that one. Question for you though, Nancy, has to do with two items on your list that will take an exhaustive amount of time. One is all of us going to the DMV and sitting for hours waiting to change our address. The other has to do with a new passport. Is there anything, anything we could do at the city level or the residents association that could facilitate for the city a day session or something where we have representatives come in and help us process those materials more readily and get a quicker response to them?
So my, is this working? Yes. Is this working? Yes, it's working. So yes, there is on the CRA website, a No Addresses Guide that gives a lot of helpful hints for dealing with today's state. It's not perfect. If you've got suggestions, additions, updates to that, I'm all ears. I'll update it really quickly. So you can go to the Carmel Residents Association and get that No Addresses Guide, including things like you can sign up for being noticed when there's mail in your P O box. That's something that a lot of people don't know about, that property owners can get a free mailbox. A lot of people don't know about that, et cetera. So, so there's a lot of good information there. So, but then to get back to your question on some of the government, you know, IDs and that type of thing, passports. So my belief and recommendation is, but I love your suggestion as well, is that you don't need to change anything until you need to go in anyway for a renewal or an update. So it, because it, my assumption here, and you can correct me, is that if it works today, you may not need to change it. You may benefit from changing it. So you could be proactive, in which case doing something like having a driver's license refresh or a real ID now, refresh ID, real ID information with your address, we could explore that. Happy to, as we're dealing with all these entities, to try to expedite some of those activities. But again, if it's not broken and you get your renewal notices and you get, you know, all of the standard information, you don't need to update it.
Dan, here you go. I was more concerned with any potential overseas travel. The length of period of time to get a passport turned around now and have a real ID that supports it, et cetera, is pretty exhaustive and there's a lot of risk associated with it right now with this current administration. So if we could, if we could facilitate expediting those two exercises, I think could be helpful.
We'll dig into what that might, might involve and might be possible.
I do want to mention one thing that I didn't mention this on the utilities, but I think something to remember with all of the service providers that work with us, they're, yeah, they're kind of interested in where our house is, but they're really interested in where our money is, right?
Yeah.
And they want to make, they want to get paid. And the things the utilities were most happy to hear is that we weren't changing our billing address, right? That the bill is still going to go where it always went, whether that goes to your P O box or in my case, it goes to my email, right? And as long as that doesn't change, they get paid, they're happy. And if getting the physical address is changed takes a little time, it doesn't really affect them and it doesn't really affect us.
And Karen just mentioned that you can actually change your address online with DMV. So, but that has to be loaded in all of the places that will be a part of our go live. So if it's not, you know, readable by the DMV agent on, or the systems online with DMV, then it won't take. So, so that's got to all be in the go live rollout. So there may be a lot of others that are like that as well.
I can make a quick comment about this, which is that just as with utilities, it's a difference between your billing address and your service address. Your driver's license probably has your P O box on it now. Mine does. There's no reason to change that. I would just leave it. Yeah, that's where the mail goes. When the DMV sends you mail, they're going to send it to your P O box. So I, yeah, some things may need to change. You don't need to update your passport if you move. I mean, I moved a few years back and I didn't have to update my passport. When you apply for a new one.
Physical address to get back into the country.
Let's move on, Jen, if you don't mind. Let's move on. So Daniel, can you?
I've lost track of who was next.
This woman right here. And then next to it.
Okay, I don't mind standing up.
Thank you.
I can still do it proudly. Yeah, thank you. I'm a lifelong Carmelite, have lived here since I was a kid. Well-remember the day when I turned 16 to get my driver's license. The DMV, where do you live? Oh, on the northeast corner of Lincoln and Santa Lucia. Don't, you don't live in a box, do you? You don't live in a P O box. Give me your, you know, and so it was one of those things. I am so appreciative of what you've done today. I'm so grateful for the information, filling in a lot of questions that I've had. My question is, you mentioned something, Bob, that maybe we wouldn't have to have a general election for this. It might be something that the city council could decide. My question is, would you amplify on that? And if so, what do you think the possible timing might be?
Yeah, sure. So the, I know what the city council already said. So in March, when we talked about this, actually Dale asked me to run that piece of the meeting. And one of the questions I put before my colleagues was, you know, do you want to have an election in this year? And secondly, do you think we should have an election at all? And I believe four out of the five of us just said, no election, that this is our job. And it maybe was five of five. I don't remember. So I, that could change, you know, I can't predict the future, but I don't think that's where this is going. I really don't. Next question. So we got Wayne.
Thank you. Wayne Moon, and I appreciate very much what the work of the work group has been and time and effort you put into it. I'm one of those who would like to keep the addresses as they are. And I therefore have been looking more for a way to compromise and still keep the addresses. And one of the questions, and then I know it's supposed to be a question. Have you considered creating a, let's say a map that might be an aerial view for that matter, that the service providers and the emergency service providers would have with each of the names on that map? Maybe it's an arrow, maybe to the map with the addresses. There's no confusion about that. And everybody has a computer these days and that can be put on as a computer so that the emergency providers, the service providers can in fact find the right place. So I hope you have looked at that. And if not, I hope you would find the time to do it. Thank you.
So I'll jump in on that a little bit right now. There is a Google map that has house names on it. And if your house isn't on that, and that's in my No Addresses Guide on the CRA website and the link to it, et cetera, and you can update your information for your home. So there is such a thing. It's not very visible to the world, though, which is kind of defeats. So you got to know it's there and you've got to know to update it. And, you know, if you've bought a home and you've changed your name. We were always told that if you change your house name, it's bad boogie, but I have no idea. But anyway. So there is a map that has house names. We would like to encourage with keeping some of the character that is what we all know and love, encourage people to name their homes. My preference, personal preference, I haven't bounced this off my other half, but is to put whatever our number is and then our house name underneath it. That's, that's the signage that I would prefer. And I would recommend to people now, we've not talked about enforcement and that will be a city council decision on how that's done. But encouraging people to, you know, give their homes names as you guys have, October Moon. And I love that. Do that and your, your number, whatever that might be when it all rolls out is just wonderful. And I think it can keeps the character and the personality of our village going in a way that kind of gives us that, you know, that special touch. So.
So I want to actually, Wayne, let me try. So thanks, Nancy. It's a broader question, really, because the map you're talking about with actually the three southeast with our numbers. So yes, the house name map exists somewhere, but there actually is a map. Emily just showed it to us that Evan in the planning department has that is reasonably accurate, that, that has our traditional addresses on it. I think the challenge is that it's not a universal standard. And that's really this aha moment for me that AMS, that the address management system is the universal standard. It's the safe source for street numbers so that, you know, someone that's coming from Chicago can find you, right? And if somebody's coming from Chicago and they need to drive, you know, go through that non-universal map, they won't find you. So, you know, is that possible? Absolutely. A lot of people have sent me things about what about this app? What about that app? Why don't you send your coordinates when you talk to people? And the fact is, there are dozens of unique workarounds that help, that they do help. I mean, I send my coordinates on Google Maps and people usually, usually can find me if they have Google Maps. But it's not universal.
Well, I was trying to, is that working?
Yeah, we hear.
What I was trying to do was maintain the uniqueness of our community. And probably the reason I'm here is because it is unique and I think a lot of other people. And so a map that was rigorous in terms of having all the units on it and house names does not matter, as you say. So I would still like, if you haven't fully considered it and you may have, for that to be considered. Because to make a compromise here, I think would be very valuable.
Fair enough. Again, city council will have to make decisions and we've kind of done what we can. Again, that map does exist. Let's keep going because there's a lot of questions. Then let's go to, next to Carrie. Or you can just pick, Dan, it doesn't matter. Sorry.
I just want to know, the September 4th meeting, will it be a continuation of this or a repeat of today?
It will be a repeat of today, repeat. And by the way, we would appreciate feedback on what worked and what didn't. Where were we too long-winded? Where were we too detailed? Where were we not showing enough, like the numbers, right?
Hi, I have the microphone. I want to thank you because I was very impressed with this. And I've been here almost 30 years and I have been vocal about I hate not having an address. And I can't believe that putting four numbers, four inches on my house, my daughter's house I live in, will change the character or will cause the property tax to go down or that people won't come here because I have four numbers on this building. It's just hard to believe that that would change anything. They've still got the ocean right there and that's why they come not to look or not look at house numbers. Unless yesterday I got stopped because they couldn't find the hog's breath. I get stopped daily because they can't find the oxi-tatzy house. And, and these are visitors that should be accommodated. They can't find their hotels. Uber can't find them. And why? Because of four numbers on your house. That doesn't, and it's a standard. And if I have a heart attack, I want the, one of those cute guys quickly, quickly.
So I'm going to ask us to steer clear of the rallying comments because I want to be absolutely respectful to everybody in this room and I'd love to keep this to questions and suggestions. I know. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to keep this from being some of the previous meetings, that's all. Yeah.
Hi, I just wanted to mention something about like Google Maps versus Apple Maps. I have given court, I have given my coordinates for someone that was using a different map system and they ended up on the south side of the city instead of the north. So they're not equal and they're not universal.
Yeah, so let's get up here to Joe.
Astonishing amount of work. I'm grateful for what you all have done and how objective and I think balanced you've succeeded in being, not just tried to be. Very impressive. And I've owned a house here for 42 years. I've lived here for five. And I'm the guy that pivoted from no house numbers to I want a house number. Because it boils down to this, if you really love it the way it is, which I do and many people here do, don't change anything. Don't put a number on your house. Don't go to the DMV. And if you have to call 911, say I'm at fifth house southeast of 9th on Dolores, instead of saying 902 Dolores. It's your call. You don't have to change anything. And I think for the, for the number of people that clearly do have issues with not having a house number, the solution is now pretty obvious how to solve that problem. And if it doesn't cost the people that don't want the numbers anything, including putting a number on their house, why would you object? We are a community. I've lived in a lot of suburbs. I've never lived in a small town and I love a small town. It's a whole different ballgame. It is a community. And we take care of each other and we greet each other with a smile. And we, this issue has gotten way too divisive. I think partly because of a lot of bad miss and non-information and fears about closing the post office or getting your mail delivered, God forbid. It's not going to happen. And God bless these people for the hard work they've done. And if Kevin doesn't have a degree in engineering, I think we ought to grant him one immediately.
All right, can we go to, sorry, can we go to Karen, please?
Good afternoon, everybody. You know, this started quite a long time ago. And I am very impressed by how you took the work that Emily and I did and took it further. And I think that has been very valuable to put it all together. Emily is an unsung hero on our staff, believe me. She is a tremendous analyst. I just looked up, you don't have to change your passport until the time comes for you to renew. So many issues that we're worried about are really solvable. So many issues that we're worried about are really solvable. And yes, there are going to be problems when and if we implement this. But you can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And things will sort out. And there are people in this community who will help you sort them out if you're having a problem. We've got people right here. I would volunteer. I'm sure there are many people who would volunteer to help walk you through the steps that it takes to correct, add, whatever. No need to change your passport, no need to change many things. And many of them you can do online. The great thing that will happen when and if we have this is that we will be found when we need help. Guests who are visiting someone who may observe the person who knows where they are have a heart attack will be able to walk outside the house and look at a number and tell people where they are. This is a no-brainer in so many ways. And we can still say this is a unique town that does not have mail delivery. I lived in Lake Arrowhead. We had a P.O. box only, but we had a physical address for safety. And that was years ago. Many hybrid communities exist. It's not going to make us any less unique. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stacy. And sadly, I don't want to fall through. Sadly, it looks like more people are here, the opposite reason I'm here. My husband just dropped me off. He's 75 almost. We've been married almost 26 years. He grew up on 11th and Mission since 1952, classes 69. All my friends are high school, Carmel High, classes 69. They've all dealt with the addressing all their life. And anyway, he just said to me, he said, Stacy, he said, you know, AI, what's going on right now in the world? Technology is moving so fast. By the time this all gets figured out with all the entities, it's going to be figured out already. He said he just played a game this morning. He played a game on his phone and it knew exactly where our house was in Carmel by the Sea. He wasn't happy about that, but the technology is there. And to answer the question, nobody asked, but the four digits on my house, you guys, I've lived here almost 30 years. There's something about driving on Camino Real or on Mission or on 6th or on whatever street in the one square mile that every single ambulance or fire department can get to in one mile. It's all right here in one square mile. That's all we're talking. We're not even talking Carmel. Most people that I meet on the beach and that have lived here 10 years that moved here, they don't know the difference between Carmel and Carmel by the Sea. But I'll tell you what, you live here a long time, you go down the streets, you walk it, you don't realize it, but it's different. And once you see those numbers everywhere you go when you walk your dog, and they're everywhere, you're going to be in Everywhere USA. That's the difference. We got rid of the fires. We got rid of the walkways. Things are changing drastically. Maybe it's time for my husband and I move out. Surely we've got enough equity. It's been 75 years. We can move. But we really love living here like it was, and it's changing drastically. And once those four digits are multiplied times ever how many houses, that's a lot of digits. And I want to end with how you started this with your first slide. You said, so sorry, I wrote it in my notes, but you did say, Bob, and I think there's only two people here voting, I think, I don't see everybody. But you said, oh my gosh, you guys, I'm so sorry. You said it's kind of like making a new subdivision. That's how you started. And that's how I envision it. We're making a new subdivision. Some of you probably moved from a subdivision to Carmel by the Sea and you had a number. You'll have another one maybe. And if that's the way that people vote, yay, great. You win. That's great. But it's going to be different when you walk down the street and you see all the numbers. I'm sorry if you don't think it is. Thank you.
Thanks. Will you go over here? Thanks.
Thank you. My parents bought property in Carmel in 1955. And I'm a second-generation Carmelite. It has been an issue having the unique names like the Trident or Stella de Marra or the Mission House or the Red House. And then the numbers, the 3SW, 11th on Carmella, whatever. What is really important, it struck me today that I'd never heard, is that if we don't transition, our vote doesn't count. And to me, that is so important because if we don't have part of that addressing system, we may not be our vote. I think you said that.
I don't think I said that. No, no. I think your vote's fine, whatever.
Oh, okay. I thought it's.
The county, they've figured it.
Okay. I thought I had heard that.
Don't know where we live.
Okay, but vote.
They handle it. I think they handle it really well. And all our ballots come to our P.O. boxes or whatever address you've given. If you heard that, I didn't say that.
Okay, I must have misheard it, but I am still concerned. I think we need to come up to having addresses.
Who else? Nancy, you're. And then to the back, and then to Linda. All right, to the back.
I'm sorry, did I take somebody's?
No, go.
My name is Frank Perry, and I'm here with my wife, Renata. And we've lived here now for 13 years. I mention my name as Frank, but I'm better known as 10 Lobos Block 18, Lot 11. Location, APN number 93921000024377. That was the number that was given to me when I tried to sign off for Comcast 13 years ago. When I asked the gentleman who I was and where I lived, and he looked at me like as I was a Martian, asking him, take me to your leader. Because he couldn't help me. And fortunately, the assistant manager was there, the manager was there, and the district manager was there that same day. This was the Monterey store. And none of them could help me. And it took two weeks, two weeks for me to get a location identified for my home for Comcast. Now, that might seem like a trivial example, but I'm sure there are many people in here who have had to deal with various topics. And it's just very, very frustrating because they think you're living on another planet. I also want to thank this committee, as many people have, of the great work that you guys have done. Because this has been a topic for some people going back 30 years, I heard, today, 35 years. And the slide that was presented towards the end on the survey that you presented really resonated with me because the question, the topics on the left-hand side were very objective, real-world issues that people were submitting, that they have to deal with. The comments on the right-hand side were the emotional, what's the word I'm trying to think of right now? Traditional, traditional feelings that people have about the city. And I understand that, okay? People just don't want to let go. But the comments on the left-hand side, this is the year 2025, all right? That we have to deal with many of our everyday lives over the telephone, over the internet, dealing with call centers, dealing with the Philippines, dealing with India, dealing with all types of peoples to live our daily lives. And times have changed. So I want to thank the committee for doing what you're doing. I hope you can make sense of all this to the city council because it's not going to change the charm or the atmosphere of the city. It really isn't. But those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Linda, and then we're going to come up here.
Hello, I wanted to thank you all for your hard work, too. It was amazing for me to realize that you've answered almost every question. And I think that is, you know, amazing. Thank you. And just quick feedback, I thought everything today worked great. And I would, you know, encourage you to do a similar format for your next meeting. And I'm going to be starting a sign company soon. I'll be posting my address online. Thank you.
Hi, Connie Hess. And again, I'd like to just thank you so much for the professional presentation that you did. Very, very informative. And I would like to address with the lady in the orange, I think what you were thinking about when he commented was that we couldn't vote on this because it was actually against the law. And so it couldn't be initiative. Is that correct?
I could see where that would have been.
Clarify that.
Yes. Yes. All right, right up front. Thank you, Nancy.
Yeah, I echo what everybody else has said, too. And I want to thank you all for all the hard work that you've done. You've done an amazing job. I agree with what I think it was Jim said. I don't know why we're debating it because it is the law and we should abide by it. I would like to be able to put my address into my phone where it says emergency to find you and let it accept it. If I put our address in there, it says no such address. It just doesn't know. And yes, Carmel is charming and it always will be because of the way it is. I mean, just because we have some numbers on our house doesn't make it any less charming. And if you don't want to put a number on your house, then just don't do it. You have that choice. You know, like I would love to have mail delivery. I don't like going to the post office. But you're still going to be able to have the best of both worlds. So I don't understand why people are so divided about it. I really don't. And it's the law, so it should be instituted.
Thanks. Let's go over to Maria, please.
I'm sorry, I couldn't stay quiet. No, I'm just kidding. Just an opportunity to say thank you. I have to say two questions and one comment. My comment is a brief comment. One is, seems to me that if safety and health are a demand and we want to apply, basically meet the requirements of the law, we should follow the law. Simple. Seems to me that that's a step we ought to take. The two questions for you and for the team is, you're saying that at the next city council, you'll present a message like this one briefed in one way. What are the next steps? So you presented at the city council, what are the next steps? One, two, three. What are you going to be doing? That's my question to the team.
All right, I'll try to answer that as we try to look ahead, but the, we'll come to you next. It depends what the city council wants to do, right? And because they may just say, thank you, but no, thank you. They may say, so I don't know. But I'll take the path of that they say, thank you. And I'll go to the extreme and that they even like Kevin's prototype. And they direct staff, because remember, this group is going to be done. Now, some of us may be called on in the future to help with an implementation if there is one, but that's a different matter. You know, we're done. But I think if the city council said, please proceed, then staff will have to own that process. I think based on our conversations with the county, the post office, and the utilities, it could probably get rolled out in three to six months. But that's a guess. It kind of just depends if we, will we really get the attention from the utilities we think we're going to get? Will we really get the attention from the county that we think we're going to get? So a lot of, a lot of depends on that. And, you know, we only dug so deep. We dug deep enough to answer your questions, but not necessarily deep enough to know exactly what would happen. So I hope that helps. Anymore?
Hi, my name's Laurel and I live on Monteverde to northwest of 10th, if anybody's interested. And the thing I wanted to bring up is the emotion that exists on both sides of this really requires a change management plan. And I used to work in tech as well. And fondly, I remember how the engineers would say, you know, that product's just going to sell itself. And I see several engineers up here that you've done the research, but the communication and the impact and the implementation plan may not be part of your purview, but it's really critical. And it's an important part in selling the concept. So you alluded to the fact that those who do not want to put a sign on theirs don't have to. Well, I'm not sure that's how the law is written. Yeah. So that's part of this whole part and parcel. So visually, how this is going to affect the town is really what a lot of people care about. I would suggest that you dig in a little bit more about that and make that visual to people. Because when Karen came through and this came through the community before, I consider myself a reasonably bright person, but I didn't get that fundamental concept of the mail delivery versus AMS. And that's very fundamental to selling this whole concept. So I would, as I said, change management plan includes a good communication plan and a good marketing plan. And having been on the marketing side of technology, I'd like to put in a little voice for that.
Thank you very much. Really good comments.
Is the number's community property? Is it community property? If I divorce Karen and I keep the number?
I got it now.
You can't divorce Karen. That was a one-way ticket.
No, you have to split the number.
Say that we already have a sign on our house. We have our address on our house. And it lights up at night. It's very tasteful. It looks really nice. And people always comment on it. And people that deliver to our home are very appreciative of this sign on our home. I had a driver frustrated, couldn't find our house. I had to go drive to him so I could bring him in to me. And he says, ma'am, there's only two places on earth that don't have addresses. Do you know what they are? And I said, no. He said, well, one is hell and the other is Carmel by the Sea.
And Nancy, all the way in the back. All the way, all the way. Do we have more, anymore after this one?
Hi, I'm Laura Bowling and I moved into Carmel by the Sea exactly one year ago, into the village. And it was extraordinarily difficult to change everything. But this is the first time I've been to one of the meetings. And I'm so grateful that your presentation was so professional and so objective. So I thank you for that. I think that clarity has really helped. I want to also do a shout-out on the communications. My entire professional life has been in branding and communications. And I can see here the emotional elements of what we have and the specificity of the information we need to communicate. We'll absolutely demand that we really do everything we can to make that communications rollout as smooth as possible. I will gladly volunteer my professional efforts to help you in any way possible because I think this will be an extraordinary step forward to keep the charm and the beauty of what we have, but to make it easy for people. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anymore? Dale?
Good job. Excellent job. Two things, Nancy. One for you. Why wouldn't ADUs just be considered like an apartment number of the house? It seems like it might be a little simpler, but you don't need to answer. And then second, if AMS is implemented with our addresses, will we be able to get rid of the 911 system and the space and the cost related to that?
I'm going to put that one to the chief, sorry, the acting chief, to Todd.
No comment. I'm kidding. Thank you, sir. Well, the reason why we have our own PSAP, our own 911 center right now is because of the address issue. It's the primary issue. So it could lead to that change down the line, which would not mean that the dispatchers we have would be out of a job necessarily. There could, we could find other purposeful work for them, with them. But yeah, I don't know. But I don't know about that, but maybe. But I will tell you that nobody knows the city better than our dispatchers, right? Nobody knows how to send those emergency calls for heart attacks, things like that. They know how to describe. They know what your house looks like often. They know the name of your house. And I'm very grateful for that. So yeah, there could be that change because then that's part of the reason why the county hasn't incorporated our city into 911.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I've learned a lot from our first responders is the high. from our first responders is the high-touch factor that is provided. And I think dispatch is part of that. But you know, we, we operate the only ambulance maybe in the state that actually has a code called pick up and put back. That means somebody fell in their kitchen. They answer the call, they go into that person's house, they pick them up off the floor, put them back in their chair and say goodbye. And right? And you're not going to get that from, in many other communities. You're certainly not going to get that from it. No, AMR will do it, but they'll charge you $5,000 for doing it. Anymore?
If we have a fire station in Carmel, is that run by Monterey? I don't understand that. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we, we own the building, we own the trucks, but all of the staff and all of the leadership and all of the administration and the payroll is all handled by the city of Monterey. It's a contract. We just write the city of Monterey, Monterey check every month.
So why don't we have our own? Like, why don't?
This was a decision made, what, 14 years ago? Um, and it, it actually works great, again, because of economies of scale. Trying to run, it's true with our ambulance. It's so hard to run our own ambulance. It's four people we have to hire. If we lose one, we're down seven, you know, we're down 25%. They're hard to rehire, whereas Monterey has a much bigger workforce and the ability to, to do things better. So, and it works.
To volunteer my time if you needed any help.
Thank you. Anymore? Oh, did we have anything on Zoom? Sorry, I forgot that was out there.
Yeah, Kenneth, go ahead.
Uh, yes, good afternoon. Thank you. I just wanted to say.
Kenneth, unmute yourself.
That my wife and I own, it's Duckworth Cottage. It's Carpenter Street, third southwest of Second Avenue. We also have a home in, in Lake Tahoe, summer home. And for years after the tract was built in the 1950s, the houses were known by lots, lot numbers, one through 150. So the houses just were known as a lot. But then in the 1980s, we were informed.
So it's for Kenneth?
Yes.
Oh, technical difficulties. Yeah, please, please email to this address so that we can follow up with you that you see on the screen. That would be helpful. Sorry for the technical hiccup.
All right, thank you. We're done.